So, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May council meeting. I would like to begin by asking councillor Greg James to do the welcome to country.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe, my fellow councillors. Firstly, I pay my respects to our ancestors. I acknowledge our elders, past, present and emerging. I would like to acknowledge the Yordi Order Nations and all its people, whose land we meet on today. On behalf of the elders council, the 16 family groups and the eight respected tribes who share in the status of traditional owners, I say very warm welcome to this wonderful land and country. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor James. The Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledge the Yordi Order peoples of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. With power of respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Privacy notice: this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with official minutes of this meeting. Item four, the governance principles. Council considers that the recommendations contained in this agenda gives effect to the overarching governance principles stated in section nine slash two of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles are as followed; they are listed in the agenda from items one to nine. Apologies, councils, do we have any apologies today?
Mayor O'Keeffe, I'd like to note the apology of councillor Dobson.
Thank you very much. Item six, declarations of conflict of interest. Do any councils have a conflict of interest to declare? I wish to declare a conflict of interest on item 10.2, which is the Sports Hall of Fame Revision of Nominee Guidelines for Council Adoption. Item seven, confirmation of minutes at, sorry, minutes of previous meetings. Are any of the items of the minutes opposed? There's a recommendation, would a council like to move a recommendation on page seven, please? Sam, councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that the minutes of the 20th of April 2021 council meeting and the 11th of May 2021 additional council meeting, as circulated, be confirmed.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, councillor James? All those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Item eight, public question time, we have nil received. On page eight, item 9.1, petition for light and upgrade of Shepparton Skate Park. A petition containing 149 signatures has been received by council, asking for light to be put in at the Shepparton Skate Park and for a new skate park or current skate park upgrade with more adult-sized ramps as well. There is a recommendation on page eight, would a council like to move a recommendation, please? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'd like to move as a motion that the council receive and note the petition titled Petition for Lights and Upgrade at Shepparton Skate Park in accordance with Governance Rule 18.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, please? Councillor Abdullah? All those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Councillors, on page nine, item 10.1, we have the Youth Strategy Update 2020 and Future Directions. There is also a recommendation on page nine, would a council like to move the motion, please? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I would like to move a motion on page nine of the agenda, that the council note the achievements of the Greater Shepparton Youth Strategy over the past 12 months and note the proposed future direction of the youth committee.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, councillor Spinks? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. We all know that Greater Shepparton aspires to be a very youth-friendly region where we can attract youth, we can retain our young people and we provide opportunities for young people to thrive. So, this report basically provides an overview of Greater Shepparton's, Greater Shepparton Youth Strategy and Action Plan 2019 to 2023. The progress of the action plan is outlined and it really shows so many important actions that have been delivered in 2020, which was indeed a very challenging year due to COVID-19, but it also sort of compelled us to be very creative in delivering those services and events for our young people. As I've noted in the report, this word-and-mouth youth committee, it was instrumental in providing a platform to our young people to undertake various positive and healthy activities and develop their organisational and leadership skills. Also, platforms such as Shepparton Statement, they were provided and they also provided an opportunity to our youth to have a voice in matters related to climate change and environment. Now, an internal department review has identified that there's a need to further strengthen this engagement of youth in our region and engagement of youth and their leadership in civic matters. So, it's, so the motion is about noting the permission of a youth committee. I fully support this youth committee, both junior and senior youth committees. And I hope that after the initial 12 months, this committee is considered for the, for the status of a full-fledged advisory committee of council. And I also hope that the committee reflects, once the committee is formed during this process, it reflects all the diversity that our region is known for. And, and the youth committee basically help us identify services and policies and programs that cater to the needs of our young people. It is so important, so I'm really pleased to see this development.
Thank you very much. Councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Just briefly to reiterate everything that has been said, youth obviously are a very large portion of our community. They're often underrepresented, they often don't have a voice at the table. And obviously, we can always do more and should always do more. So, the youth strategy achieves great things and I'm very excited at the direction of the youth committee and what it will achieve and very excited for the young people that will sit on it. And so, I am very supportive of this particular motion and of involving our youth at any point, so.
Thank you very much. Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Any councillor like to speak to the motion? Now go to the vote. Sorry, did you want to speak to the motion?
Just, just quickly, Mayor O'Keeffe, if I could to, just to reiterate the importance of youth strategy. One of the key determinants of the success of the community is our ability to attract and retain youth. So, we need to be thinking about practising, taking out strategies that are going to help us retain our youth and attract our youth that have gone away to study and work. When they want to make a home, we want them making a home back here. For that to happen, we've got to, we can have a youth culture that is attractive to them, so.
Thank you very much. With that, would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I just wanted to make mention that we've got some outstanding young people that are coming through, through the ranks at the moment, in particularly someone who won the volunteer award last night in Tom Saxton and, of course, one of the nominees in Noah Moore as well. Fantastic young people that are out there doing their bit for the community. It's really important from a council perspective and also from the councillor's perspective that we do listen to these voices, like we do with taking in that petition regarding the skate park. It's really, might not be everybody's cup of tea in skating, but we really need to listen to what they want to have in their community. And having worked in education, you know, the voice of the young is, you know, paramount to where we go in the future.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. I'll now ask councillor Priestley to please come and take the chair for item 10.2, which I declare a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to direct you to page 14 of the agenda, item 10.2, Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Revision of Nominee Guidelines for Council Adoption. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Priestley. I'd like to move a recommendation is a little bit different than what is written in the published agenda. The recommendation is that the council, and I will read it all out. One, endorse the recommended changes to the guidelines for the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame. Hall of Fame honour roll and junior honour roll for criteria one B, criteria five and criteria six. Two, endorse the recommended removal of criteria three to the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame honour roll and junior honour roll. Three, endorse the recommended changes to the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame honour roll, criteria one D. To four, endorse the recommended changes to the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame junior honour roll, criteria one A. But within the context of that, that should read, the nominee must have resided within the city of Greater Shepparton for at least five years. And, five, endorse the recommended changes to Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame junior honour roll, criteria one C.
Thank you, councillor Brophy, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion, thank you Deputy Mayor Priestley.
Thank you, councillor Sali. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Priestley. I will put in context the recommended changes to the criteria to the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame awards. And I do this as deputy chair in the absence of the chair of the advisory committee, councillor Dobson. The, the committee, for those who don't know, are made up of some luminaries within the sporting and community here. People like Peter Holland, Daryl Butcher, Margot Koskalaenin, Don Kilgower and David Queen, as well as previous councillors who were on there, which was councillor Juvenetti and also councillor Patterson. The Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame was formed to preserve, celebrate and showcase the sporting excellence and achievements of Greater Shepparton residents. It particularly recognises those who have brought honour to our municipality by performing at the highest level in Australia and across the world. It was resolved in 2019 that the existing terms of reference for the Greater Shepparton Sporting Sports Hall of Fame needed to be revised from the original policy and procedure document to reflect learnings from that set of rules as such, and particularly that the clause that required inductees to have been retired from the sport. Although the changes were agreed to by the committee, the advisory committee at the time, including the two councillor members, the alterations were not taken to a council meeting for council endorsement. It has now been resolved to present these changes to this ordinary council meeting. Particularly during the COVID, the advisory committee did not meet, hence there was also a delay in regards to that as well. The changes recommended reflect past learnings, including where the committee believes that those who have reached Australian or world standard should be recognised as close to the achievement as possible. Then their recognition can be truly a celebration of their achievement. The way the structure stood originally, it would have been a long time after that achievement for which they had been recognised, which could see their honour, sort of lose momentum and if proposed, an inductee continued to still play at the highest level. Therefore, it is recommended by the advisory committee to delete criteria three to reflect the more modern-day thinking. Timing has been a bit skewed with in all aspects, the criteria change, the nominations, and even the Olympics have thrown that out because it was always coincided with the Olympic year. This, this has been an evolution of the criteria. Nominations are open all the time. Midterm, however, between inductions, there will be advertising to provide the opportunity to reinvigorate the, the application process. There will be a safeguard with the revocation clause, so whether that be a Hall of Famer who falls foul of the, because of their good, good character, they fall foul of that, or found guilty of doping, et cetera, whilst still competing or post their career, then we can receive, rescind that honour. We hope we never do, but it is an integrity insurance that I am, I am and the advisory committee will be comforted in knowing that it is there if needed. Whilst this clause is still being developed, it will be the next piece of the work for the committee to work on. Pleasingly, there hasn't been a need to use it at this time, but obviously, it would be good to have finalized for any future use. Another change made to the body of the recommendation.
Councillor Brophy, would you like some more time?
Yes, please.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Another change made to the body of the recommendation was that, that were published in the Junior Honour Roll Criteria one A, that should, that now I've asked to read, the nominee must have resided within the city of Greater Shepparton for at least five years. Previously in that publication, the nominee and family must have resided. This is pretty surplus in as, you know, what difference does it really make whether the junior was living with the family, guardian or billeted in this particular area, as long as they were here for five years. These recommendations are about tidying up the criteria. It is about placing common sense across all the three awards and reflecting what the community, by the advisory committee, would expect. Therefore, I put forward the recommendation as read. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brophy. Councillor Sali?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Priestley. Yes, thank you. And look, councillor Brophy has summed up his motion very well and I'll offer just a few comments with that. And one in particular around the removal of being retired for two years to then be eligible offers a bit of flexibility. And I think councillor Brophy outlined the reasons with that is, I guess when we're, we're inducting people into this Hall of Fame, it's a celebration and if we can offer that to people that are, I guess, very active in their current sporting field at the moment, they can be recognised and celebrated with their family whilst all participating and obviously after reaching the highest level that they can. So, for that reason, I'm very supportive of the new motion that councillor Brophy has put up.
Underwood for shadow motion.
Thank you, councillor Abdullah, noted. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For the purpose of debate, I have concerns around the removal of the two-year waiting period. I feel that by removing it, it is not fully appreciating the entire career of an individual, that they may have reached a peak level but then continue to go on and do more. That will not be captured if we, to remove that two-year waiting period. I also have concerns around the timing of this adjustment to the guidelines being that it's within the middle of a, a period of receiving nominations and they soon will come to us, I believe, at the next meeting. However, on the other side of it is, of course, important to consider the fact that an advisory committee is supposed to advise and that is what they have done. So, weighing both sides of that, I suppose, I wanted to bring to the table the weight of an advisory committee's suggestion will always be important. However, whether those other two things potentially outweigh that in this particular instance, I just want to make sure that those points are on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Thank you, councillor James.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Priestley. I, I think that the, this supports sports people at their peak of their sporting career. It doesn't, irrelevant, it's still what sport. They participate at either a state, national or international level. It's important to consider that the recognition needs to be considered in that too as well. I, I support the newly proposed recommendation as per the advisory committee that councillor Brophy has brought to the table today.
Thank you, councillor James. Would anybody like to speak against the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you. I, basically, my opposition to this is due to the timing, as councillor Spinks has highlighted. And I agree with what councillor Spinks has said. So, two points that I want to make, one is in terms of the timing. So, I believe that the timing of revision of nominee guidelines is not, is not the right time, given the fact that we are already in the process of evaluating the nominations that we have received. So, I'm happy to, for council to consider this at a, at a point when that process has, has completed, has been completed. And the second thing is about looking at these individual points. Yes, the two-year waiting period, it's a best, best practice guideline and I would hope that we consider this and we consider this to retain it at, and that's, that's the main, these are the main two points. Having said that, I also want to acknowledge the amount of work that this committee, advisory committee, has done and the amount of effort that they have put into this work in terms of being such an active member of, such active members of this committee and doing all the hard work in the past few years and also in, at this point in time. I do acknowledge the hard work, but I do feel that it's not the right time to revise these mini guidelines.
Thank you, councillor. Would anybody like to speak for the motion? Anybody like to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you. I just want to start by saying that I don't disagree with the changes that are recommended per se. I'm all for modern-day thinking, I'm all for flexibility and I also take councillor Spinks's point about celebrating the lifelong career of an athlete, that hasn't necessarily been flagged strongly. And of course, I'd support a formal review process but at a later stage. So, it's difficult for me to support a recommendation that calls for significant changes to guidelines at this late stage of an award ceremony. And regardless of the circumstances leading up to this point, regardless of those circumstances, we do have already a set of criteria that has set the stage for these upcoming awards. It's up to council to deliberate on the timing and appropriateness of any changes and that is the basis of my objection. I just find it hard to understand how anyone would think it's fair to move the gold posts at this stage because it will have a significant bearing on who will be inducted. So, from a timing perspective, no more nominations could practically be considered at this point. Nominees will need to be considered by the committee and ratified prior to the next month's meeting, before reaching a council meeting for the induction ceremony in early August. We are that far down the line, it's finished. And it may sound harsh, so I apologise in advance, but late ad hoc changes do come across as being unprofessional. They potentially put current eligible candidates at a disadvantage and it suggests the committee having difficulty governing by their current rules. They will have ample opportunity to review the guidelines prior to the next ceremony and they can bring that award ceremony forward by two years or more if desired. These are lifelong, long-term accolades, these awards are prestigious. I just don't believe there's enough justification or urgency to change the criteria on what seems to be a sticking point in who's potentially going to be nominated this year. In fact, if we do that, it could potentially undermine the integrity of the awards altogether. So, based on timing, based on process, based on governance, it's a firm no from me. Sorry.
Councillor Summer? Councillor Brophy, would you like a right of reply?
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Priestley. I think I'll, I'll speak regarding the timing aspect of things because that's obviously a fair part of the discontention of that. It's really a matter of cleaning up what should have probably been done 18 months ago. It's, the whole criteria since 2016 has been an evolution in terms of the criteria and looking at it and the changes, et cetera. But in 2019, if we went back to the advisory committee and we have a look there at the documentation and what was actually put forward by that committee at that time, within the committee, that they were ready to go, they had the changes in place to go, for whatever reason, and predominantly it was because of COVID that came in, they didn't meet afterwards, so they hadn't had a time to reflect back on whether it had gone through council or not gone through council. It's a matter of just cleaning up what should have probably been done 18 months ago. So, those changes would have come into effect 18 months ago and we wouldn't have been talking about it now in the lead-up to, closer to the induction process, which is, and the particular ceremony being in August.
Thank you, councillor Brophy. Before we go to the, to the vote, I'd just like to make a couple of comments and really they are around the, the fact that this committee of passionate and committed individuals with great knowledge of our sporting community have put together these proposed changes around 18 months ago. So, these are not new or, or recent changes, it's just that it's taken this time to come before council. So, these ideas have been around for some time and to some extent, the committee have been operating on the premise that these, these ideas would come before council. Due to COVID and various reasons, it's taken some time for them to come here. Okay, we will now go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Motion carried. Excuse me, and I'll just get Mayor O'Keeffe.
There we go. Councillors, we now go to page 21, item 11.1, the borrowing policy. There's also a recommendation on page 21, would a council like to move a motion? Councillor like to move a motion? 11.1, borrowing policy? One's caught up? Thank you. Councillor Spinks?
Thank you. I'd like to move to a motion that the council adopt the borrowing policy as attached to this report.
Very much, do I have a second, please? Councillor Priestley? Councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you.
Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Look, I'll just speak briefly to, to the report. In short, that this is a good governance, that the organisation has a policy in place so that it's, has direction on when it's appropriate to take a loan and when it's appropriate not to. The, the key aspects of it are appropriate use of borrowings, planning and consultation, borrowing ratios, borrowing term and interest type and lending institution. And really, it, it's a great piece of policy to have in place so that council can't attempt to, to go for a loan at an inappropriate moment.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 24, item 11.2, contracts awarded under delegation from April 2021. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yes, I'd like to move the, the recommendations 11.2 on page 24, contracts awarded under delegation, April 2021.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, please? Councillor Sali?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe, I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yes, it's, it's quite simple, it's one contract awarded under delegation, under delegated authority by the CEO. We then have four contracts awarded under delegate, delegated authority by director. We have three contracts awarded under delegated authority by a manager. And then we have 11 requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded. The awarded contract periods are from the first of April to the 27th of April. The rest are still at tender stages. And it's a good mixture of both local contractors that are involved in, in the processes too as well, Mayor. And lots and lots of organisations have been benefiting from these contracts.
Thank you very much, councillor Sali, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, very briefly, thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just add to what councillor James mentioned, there obviously a significant amount of funds being spent, which is great and some forecast funds there as well, just big investment being made there at the Merriam Swimming Pool as well. Just over $230,000 there, which is really good. We also have here the construction of stage one of Truca Road Maripona Shared Path as well. I remember that on the agenda a little while back as well, so it's good that that's underway. And another one there I'll just mention, which is the design work for Nixon Street, which for those that frequent the area, it's a construction proposed works between Skeen and Harold Treading Shepparton. So, basically, it's a replica of what was being done between Railway Parade and Skeen Street will now be done between Skeen and Harold Tread, so that'll look really good as well once that's eventually finished. Thank you.
Very much. Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to speak briefly on contract number 2151, which is design of Packham Street, Shepparton, Lumpsump Contract for Functional and Detailed Design for Road and Footpath, Curb and Channel Drainage Upgrades for Packham Street in Shepparton. I grew up near that area and it hasn't really had a lot of improvement since then. It's an ex-formal commission area, so quite rundown, no curbed channel, has all the bones in there that would make it a glorious street, such as those white-coloured gums right through the middle of the nature strip there. And it's right in front of the dual inch Shepparton's crown, which is sports city. So, a lot of people use that road and they're driving through what could be quite a rundown area just to be greeted by this multimillion-dollar sports facility, which seems a little bit incongruent and not the best welcome we could imagine. So, for me, fixing up these former commission areas, which obviously have been neglected over time, is a really, a wonderful achievement of, of council to be doing this. There's quite a few different areas that require it. For the people who live there, I'd imagine it will lift their living standard and give them a lot more pride in their town. And hopefully, that'll resonate throughout the broader community. So, that's something I'm really pleased to see as part of, as part of these delegated jobs.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 30, item 11.3, appointments of the Audit and Risk Management Committee. There's also a recommendation on page 30, would a council like? There's also a recommendation on page 30, would a councillor like to move a motion please? councillor Priestley?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, I'd like to move the motion as per the recommendation on page 30, that the council, one, appoint Goran Matrevski as the Chair of the Audit and Risk Management Committee until the 30th of April 2022. And two, appoint Stephen Coates and Vivek Chopra as independent members of the Audit and Risk Management Committee until the 30th of April 2024.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? councillor Brophy? councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe. I'd just like to firstly congratulate Goran as his appointment as Chair. Goran has been on the Audit and Risk Committee since 2019 and he's a thorough and organised and committed individual with excellent experience outside of this organisation and brings up a whole lot of skill and knowledge to that group. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate the new successful appointments, Stephen and Vivek to the committee. They are outstanding candidates with excellent experience in other councils on this type of role. So they're going to be able to broaden our knowledge and look at the way we go about our audit and risk management and hopefully bring some further innovations to that group. And then lastly, I'd just like to congratulate and thank our outgoing members, John Kallija and Anne O'Connor, John who's been there since 2015 and Anne since 2016. While the appointments to the committee do receive a small payment, these are people of a capability that are able to easily earn more money in the private sector and they're essentially doing this as a contribution to the operation of our council. They have both been outstanding contributors to our audit and risk management and I thank them for their service and congratulate them for their great work.
Thank you very much. councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, just very briefly, reiterating what councillor Priestley has said, I do congratulate Goran on being the Chair and the appointment of Stephen and Vivek. Outstanding resumes, I've read through them when we were giving a briefing on that and exemplary, we're lucky to have the calibre that we have on that particular committee, this meeting committee and the audit. And again, I'd like to thank John Kallija and Anne O'Connor for their contribution. We're in a good position that we're in because of those sort of people, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Any councillor like to speak to the motion? Oh sorry, would you like to speak to or against?
A little against, but not completely.
Was it against?
Against. So I'd just like to point out, it's not genuinely against the motion itself, but it is a concern that there is quite a gender imbalance on this particular committee. And while absolutely congratulations to the new members that potentially will be appointed in a moment and/or that have been put up to be appointed, the reality is that representation matters, you have to have a variety of voices, to have a variety of perspectives. And I would like to think that in future, while I do not dispute that the best candidates should be put forward for these moments, I'd like to see that we are doing everything we can to try to redress that gender imbalance and to make sure that both all genders are putting their hand up for these opportunities. Thank you.
Very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Before we go to your right of reply councillor Priestley, I'd just like to also acknowledge the high calibre of the actual people that actually apply for the positions. It was actually really pleasing that our council has these opportunities to have such high representation. This is an incredibly important committee and it's really great to think that we're in really good hands with these new ones we passed this today, these new participants on the committee. Would you like to use your right of reply?
My thinking, Mayor.
We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, on page 33, item 11.4, the monthly financial report from April 2021. We have a recommendation also on page 33, would a councillor like to move a motion? councillor Abdullah?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, I would like to move the motion that the council receive and note the April 2021 monthly financial report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Do I have a second, councillor Priestley? councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks very much. Very briefly, as we know, that Local Government Act requires councils to provide quarterly financial reports and the Shepparton City Council however provides this report on a monthly basis. And this report basically compares actual performance in 10 months ending April 2021 with the adopted budget that was adopted in June 2020. Looking at some of the figures, things are pretty much pretty well, but just to highlight that our revenue is revenue from the adopted budget compared to the projected full year budget, it's showing an unfavourable variance of 1%, which means that the expectation is that we would be receiving less revenue compared to what was budgeted. And that is mainly due to some of the factors such as other income that is going to be less than the adopted budget. This unfavorable variance is mostly due to the reduced interest income from council investments resulting from low interest rates, as we all know. And also Covid-19 impact is also contributing towards this less revenue, basically because of less catering fees, for instance, from shows at East Bank. So all that is contributing towards the unfavorable variance. However, on expenditure side, we have budget forecast which is showing 3% favorable variance, which means that we are expected to have less expenses, less spending compared to what was in the adopted budget. And the main reasons can be attributed to materials and services which are projecting 10.5% less than the 2020-2021 adopted budget. And going to the, looking at the capital works, the adopted budget had $61.72 million for capital works. There is, again, there is a reduction of nearly $7 million from the adopted budget and these reductions are due to capital works that could not be able to finish in this financial year and they'll be rebudgeted into 2021 and 2022 financial year. Financial indicators are looking satisfactory. Our financial obligations in terms of loans and borrowings as percentage of rates, they are tracking well. Our local government Victoria's acceptable range is 20% where our year-to-date actually is 17.6%, which is actually below our target band, but it is looking okay at this stage. Again, our financial health in capital and current assets as percentage of current liabilities, that is also looking very well, I would say, because the VAGO.
Would you like an extension councillor?
Just want to point out that it's looking good actually because it's more than 100% and anything above 100% is considered low risk. But the report is very detailed and it really highlights all the reasons behind where the variances are positive and negative. So just go through the report and have a read. That's it.
Thank you very much. councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, just to speak briefly, the council's financial performance continues to be good. That really, the council each year delivers a very significant capital budget and in any given month, on average, you're talking about $5 million. So there's a little bit of swings and roundabouts when it comes to the end of the financial year. Do they fall into the June or do they fall into the July? Some of those things are going to fall into the next year. But that's really the only comment and to say that the council continues to perform well.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 36, item 12.1, the electrical reserve land sale. There's also a recommendation on page 36, would a councillor like to move a motion please? councillor Sally?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page 36 of the agenda, item 12.1.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? councillor Summer? councillor Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you Mayor O'Keefe. Look, this is a pretty straightforward process that is formalising the sale of the land that was earlier advertised. This will now allow for stage four of the vines subdivision to proceed and start to offer some much needed residential land for people to build on and obviously more importantly, have power connected to their houses. Although the land will be purchased by the developers, it eventually will be transferred to power corp.
Thank you very much. councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'm sure the developers had recourse for electrical availability of whoever's living there if this didn't go through, but at the same time, this is also surplus land and if we can help developers become successful and create lovely living for residents, that's always a good outcome.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? councillor Spinks?
Just to quickly add to what councillor Sally and Summer have stated, that, and point out that the public notice was given and there were no submissions received for it, so it is moving through as due process.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 40, item 12.2, two lot subdivision, 7185 Goblin Valley Highway, Kaila. There is also a recommendation on pages 40 and 41, would a councillor like to move a motion? councillor Summer?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, I'll move the motion as printed on page 40 and 41.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? councillor Priestley? councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, this has been a bit of a convoluted process and here we are. I did ask about point four and five seemingly being contrary to each other. Four says not oppose the substitution of the permit and number five says oppose the amended subdivision once it becomes the substitute. So that's confusing, but point four is basically a procedural motion, whereas point five, we need to have a position on that. It is a shame it's gotten to this point. We did vote unanimously in favour of the first proposal by this applicant. We believed it would, we understood it would produce favourable farming outcomes. Two lots over 40 hectares are allowable under our planning scheme, which was part of the reason for moving that. But this new proposal is a substantial deviation from that original plan and it will result in an eight hectare lot. And unfortunately, I can't find anything in our planning scheme to support such a small subdivision on rural land. So I'm scratching my head, wondering why the applicant would go in this direction. And just to play devil's advocate a little bit, it would be a real shame if council was accused of trying to stymie a development because this development was never eligible in the first place, especially after supporting the original proposal in good faith, that would be a shame. The reason being, point four says that it's a better outcome in terms of farming is because we have this large emphasis on consolidating farming land into larger farms in our planning scheme and it's possible there's too much emphasis on that. Currently, we have a mass exodus of people from Melbourne looking for a sea change in the country. We've got a shrinking urban rental market, we've got a climate emergency that really should necessitate self sustainable hobby farms as a matter of course, not necessarily large emission farming. So perhaps our planning scheme could be more flexible in the future in terms of these emerging issues, but as it stands, these are our current guidelines. So I must agree with the recommendation put that we not support the substituted plans. I hope that made sense, it's so convoluted, but yes, I agree with the recommendation.
Thank you very much. councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, I also support the recommendation and I'd just like to point out that this parcel of land is in the farming zone, that an essential part of successful agriculture is having viable parcel sizes. It is curious to me that the original proposal for division was passed by council against council recommendations and if I was there at that time, I absolutely would not have supported it. And I would go on to say that perhaps it was a bad proposal and this is a worse one. So.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Point of order please, because that is all hearsay and assumptions. So it was voted on, we don't have an outcome from VCAT because it's changed in the middle, so saying something like that is actually very disrespectful.
Okay, thank you very much.
So that, as I said, that the farming zone consolidation of parcels is a good practice and therefore I stick with the recommendation. Thank you.
Very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 47, item 13.1, asset management policy. There is also a recommendation on page 47, would a councillor like to move a motion? councillor James?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, I'd like to move the recommendation 13.1 on page 47, under the heading of asset management policy. The recommendation is that the council adopt the revised asset management policy as attached to this report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? councillor Spinks? councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe. Asset management is a major responsibility for councils. This new policy will replace the previous asset management policies adopted in 2004 and then updated again in 2017. It incorporates the standards set out in the Local Government Act 2020, Municipals Association of Victoria and the National Frameworks for Asset Management. The council's asset management steering committee has reviewed and amended the policy for council adoption. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you very much. councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you Mayor O'Keefe.
Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 50, item 13.2, our sporting future funding, round three 2020 to 2021. There's also a recommendation on page 50, would a councillor like to move a motion? councillor Brophy?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe, I would like to move the recommendation, it's on page 50, that the council note our sporting future fund, round three 2020-2021, funds in the sports aid and minor category awards have been awarded under delegated authority to the following applicants. Won't go through all the details other than Graham Vale Sports Club, Andira Recreation Reserve Committee of Management, Merrigan Bowls Club and the Marutna Bowls Club.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? councillor Sally?
Mayor O'Keefe.
Brophy, oh sorry councillor Sally.
I'll second that motion.
Cutting you off a bit short there. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I will, thank you very much Mayor O'Keefe. Look, this is terrific, this is round three of our sporting future funding, split up into two different categories, the sports aid and also the minor funding as well. With the minor facility development, it's projects that are dollar for dollar basis and up to $15,000. The sports aid is funding between $500 to $5,000 without matching contributions. I congratulate the ones that I've just mentioned before and in particular Graham Vale Sports Club. I sort of delved a little bit deeper because I hadn't heard of them before and of course they are a collective of teams that enter different codes of sport and predominantly that come out of the Graham Vale Primary School. The club currently have teams in junior soccer and netball with plans and hopes to expand into other sports. I know it played many a day of tennis out there, so hopefully they go down that particular line. And as you'd be aware, each primary school, the schools do not run the sports clubs, but it's really the parents and the volunteers who manage that. So $3,500 towards a strategic operational and participation growth plan is absolutely ideal. Grassroots sports in local communities, fantastic and lovely to see, you know, Andira, Merrigan and Marutna also getting a gig at that too.
Thank you very much. councillor Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you Mayor O'Keefe. Very briefly, councillor Brophy touched on some very important matters regarding that motion, but obviously $160,000 was made available to give towards the fund and as councillor Brophy noted, there was three rounds, but normal circumstances, there would only be the two rounds. So with some additional funds, council were able to open up another round, which was really great to see. Councillor Brophy obviously mentioned the support groups that will receive financial benefit from that. Councillor Brophy obviously mentioned the supporter groups that received financial benefit from that, and virtually what they all asked for, they received. So it was just over twenty thousand dollars, so very good.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what other councillors have said. It's really good to see that this time around, we have, of course, there was this funding available, and it was, I think it was a very good idea to go for a third round, because normally we have two rounds. And also, I'm pleased to see that our small towns, Andera, Merrigan, they have benefited from this round of sporting future grants. And we still have some thousand, I think eighteen thousand dollars left in the grant pool, but I hope that next time there'll be more applications that would, that are risk that we received, and that would benefit our communities' sporting facilities and services. So well done, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? councillor Spinks?
Just briefly to say that I'm a massive fan of lawn bowls. I'm very happy to see these lawn bowls caught on here. But again, to just say how pleased I am to see that these grants are going to a variety of towns, a variety of purposes, and a variety of different sporting codes. I think it's doing exactly what it's intended to do, and I'm so glad that there are so many different groups across our municipality that are participating and getting this funding. It's very exciting.
Very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page fifty-six, item thirteen point three, road closure of Part Shelby Court, Shepparton. There's also a recommendation on page fifty-six. Would a council like to move a motion? councillor Sally?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page fifty-six of the agenda, item thirteen point three.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Priestley? councillor Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, very similar to the couple of gender items ago in regards to the electricals land reserve sale, that this was on the agenda as well a couple of months back, and everything has now been finalised. The court ball will be extended to enable further development surrounding Shelby Court.
Thank you very much. councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor.
Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page fifty-nine, item thirteen point four, appointment of community members to Shepparton Sale Yards Advisory Committee. There is also a recommendation on page fifty-nine. Would council like to move a motion? councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yes, I'd like to move the motion, move the recommendation thirteen point four on page fifty-nine. Appointment of community members to Shepparton Sale Yards Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? councillor Brophy? councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yeah, there were four applicants for three positions, and the advisory committee was established in two thousand and twenty, looked at, we looked at the four candidates, and they were assessed on a selection criteria that focused on sale yard operations, legislation governing sale yards, and animal welfare. The selected three candidates have considerable experience in sale yard operations right throughout the Goblin Valley and the wider areas, and also into other, other council areas as well, and obviously met the key selection criteria. So I support the recommendation is, the recommendation is to appoint Barry Croke, Jared Burke, and Graham Montgomery for two-year terms, starting on the nineteenth of May and concluding on the eighteenth of May, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you very much. councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Just very briefly, to congratulate Barry, Jared, and Graham for being appointed to that particular committee, and also in regards to their experience, absolutely, they fit their selection criteria. In regards to the sale yards, we need somebody who's there to promote it, to make it sustainable, which fits the belt, but also the experience in agricultural field, including livestock, and they tend to fit that there. Can I just make one further point, though, and probably before any other councillors get in and say that? Again, it's fairly gender-balanced in one particular way, sorry, gender biased in one particular way. We find that with a number of our committees, you know, botanical gardens is, you know, the other way and so forth. It would be good if other genders would put their hands up for maybe non-traditional committee roles that, you know, so we can get a bit more of a gender balance across all of our committees.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page sixty-two, item fourteen point one-one, council activities, April twenty twenty-one. There is also a recommendation on page sixty-two. Would a council like to move a motion? councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. So I'll move that the council receive and note the summary of the councillors' community interaction briefing programme and record of assembly of councillors.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? councillor Spinks? councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. Being in almost full-time work, it's very hard for me to attend a lot of these things, but it's a great reference for the community to have a look at how amazing our community is in terms of what it provides in events and community groups and services. It's a wonderful snapshot. We try to get everywhere we can go, and every single thing we go to, we learn something new. We're very privileged to be in a position where we can get to all these things. And I just want to say that it's sometimes really great to be a councillor for this alone. So I think it's a wonderful treat, and yeah, I encourage everyone to have a look and see what life is like.
Thank you so much. councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Still brilliantly to see so many councillors turning up to events. Myself, like councillor Summer, that, you know, we do work and always get to particular things, but when I do get to them, and there's so many councillors there, you know, even community meetings, you know, in Talamba, et cetera, to see so many councillors be there for that, the community and the feedback that I'm getting is that they're overawed by the amount of interest that we're showing, that we're listening, we're being active, and we're not being tokenistic. We actually genuinely want to be there, and we want to make the community better for each individual within the municipality.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. No, I just wanted to say a big thank you to our executive managers for their, for their efforts too, as well, in organising functions. And, you know, they have a busy schedule, of course, and to organise those functions out in the community. And a lot of the groundwork is done by the executive managers, and they're hardworking staff too as well. So I just wanted to say to executive managers and their staff too as well, congratulations, because we can't do our job without them as well.
Thank you, Mary Ann Conti. Thank you so much for that. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Prior to going to the vote, I think that's over eighty events we've actually attended within this last month amongst us. So I'm really excited to think we've been able to get back out amongst the community, and let's keep it going. And I think more than ever, we need to support the community, and we are out there doing that. Well done to my fellow councillors. I think we're all feeling the energy of being able to get back out in community and do our jobs. So let's, on that note, let's go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Page on page sixty-four, item fourteen point two, council committee reports, nil received. Fourteen point three, notice of motion, amendment or rescissions, nil received. Urgent business not included in the agenda, nil received. Just prior to closing the meeting, I would just like to acknowledge Carly, who's doing our live streaming today. She's actually leaving, and I'd like to wish her all the very best in the future, and thank her so much for her support to all of us during, particularly during my term and two, former two years as mayor. I know we had such a great time out on the run, but thank you, Carly, and I wish you all the very best in your future endeavours. I'd like to close the meeting. Close of the meeting right on five past four. Thank you so much.